All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'm Sean Horn. I'm the Watershed Resources Manager with Marin Water. And we are here today to initiate Marin Waters Watershed Recreation Planning Process. Today is the first of a two-part public scoping meeting. Today's meeting will consist of a series of presentations to provide us all with some foundational concepts that will help set the stage for future planning discussions around recreation on Marin Waters' Mount Tamalpais watershed lands. The second meeting is going to be scheduled for June 25th and will be designed to facilitate more stakeholder discussion and input. First, I want to acknowledge that virtual meetings are not the perfect format for these types of workshops. However, it's what we currently have and we'll do our best for these two meetings. And we'll continue to host additional meetings throughout this planning process to ensure a robust stakeholder engagement. I'm going to pull up today's agenda to give you and I'll give you all an idea of where we're going with this meeting and give you a very brief summary of the presentations we have in store for you. And as we get to each presentation, we'll introduce the speakers in more detail. So today we have four presentations that we're bringing to you to help provide some foundational concepts around recreation planning and where we're going with this process. The first presenter today will be Dewey Livingston, who will present on local history to ground us in the geography of Marin Waters watershed lands and to help us understand how visitation has changed and as well as the evolution of Marin Water as a water district. Next, we'll hear from Dr. Ashley D. Antonio, a recreation ecologist, who will speak about ways of balancing natural resource protection with recreation. Following that, we'll have a presentation from Kate Bickerd on partnerships and examples of how stakeholders can work together to achieve mutual stewardship goals. The final presentation will be from Jose Gonzalez, who will help us think about how we can work to include more voices in the planning process through considering historical barriers that existed for some community groups. We'll wrap up by having our panelists take questions from you. So to submit questions, you can use the Q and A function in the process. Note that we will not be able to get to all of the questions today. However, we will use the questions that you submit to inform how we design the second meeting, which will be scheduled for June 25th. Our panel in coordination with Marin Water staff will facilitate deeper discussions at that June 25th meeting and will really provide you all with an opportunity to provide input on how we move forward with the stakeholder engagement and public scoping process. This afternoon's meeting is really meant to establish some common understandings around recreation planning and provide us with some common language to work with as we move through this process. After the presentations, as I mentioned, we'll have a short Q and A period and we'll then say goodbye to our panelists and will allow for all of you to provide some public comment. I do want to emphasize again that June 25th will really be designed around stakeholder input. That's where we'll be taking notes to capture your thoughts on how we should move forward with this process. And we'll use those comments and discussion points to guide where we go in the next steps of this planning effort. Just note that this session is being recorded and we will be making it available afterwards. Also, live transcripts is available. So before we begin, I do want to acknowledge that the meeting is being supported by our partners at the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy. And we greatly appreciate all the hard work that their staff have put into making this meeting happen today. So now to get to start it, I'm going to introduce Ben Hornstein, the General Manager of Marin Water, who's going to provide some introductory thoughts around this recreation planning process. So I'll hand it over to you, Ben.
Okay, thanks, Sean, and thanks, everyone who made the time on Friday afternoon to participate in this. We appreciate it. So this meeting marks the initial step in Marin's watershed recreation planning process. We really appreciate your participation and interest in it. This process depends certainly on stakeholder input. We're going to have frequent and defined opportunities for stakeholders to provide input all through the process. As part of this effort, we hope to explore our collective appreciation for the watershed while working with all of you to identify some agreed upon desired conditions that can help guide our stewardship efforts. In 2013, we completed a watershed visitor census study to evaluate and understand how the watershed's being used in terms of the users and activities. And found that at that point, this was in 2013, over 2 million visitors come to our lands annually to view nature, ride horses, hike, fish, visit with friends, ride bikes, et cetera. As a result, of course, of the recent pandemic, with the rapid increase in visitation and they say weekdays became like weekends and weekends like holidays. I don't know what holidays are like, but they must be tough. The rapid increase strained our facilities, sanitation facilities, parking areas, and really highlighted this need to do more planning around trails and fire roads, how we manage and what experience we give our users. It also reminded us how important access to public lands are for the well-being of the community. And while we're making progress on the pandemic, I think as most or all folks hopefully know, we're unfortunately entering a pretty critical dry period in California and very much on the watershed and in our service area with our water supply that's being strained and tight organizational resources. And just really highlighting, you know, another, the core benefit of the watershed of primary water supply for approximately 200,000 community members, our ratepayers, our residents. The watershed also is a biodiversity hotspot that's recognized as part of the Golden Gate National Biosphere Reserve. And our stewardship of these lands require we continue to find ways to balance public access with natural resource conservation and restoration efforts. At the heart of this planning process, we're evaluating how to support the different goals that the visitors have while preserving the unique natural heritage of Mount Tam in the watershed. The overarching objective is develop a guiding document that balances public access. You're going to hear that word a lot, balances. That's really, is really what this is all about. Balancing between different users, balancing between the water resources, the visitors and the biodiversity of the watershed. And we appreciate that not all visitors' goals will align. And our hope that we can all be open-minded as we explore some of the desired conditions, consider new partnerships that can influence a recreational culture and really think deeply of how to be inclusive in our planning to bring forward a guiding document that will ensure that our collective love for the mountain doesn't impact the natural resources that we all treasure. So thank you again for being here.
All right. Thank you very much, Ben. Now to start this meeting off, we've put together a fun icebreaker and I'll tell you how this works. We're going to bring a photo up on the screen with a question for all of you to answer. So why do you love Mount Tam? And what you can do is use the URL and enter the code that comes with it. So the URL is at the top of the screen and you can post that into any of your devices that you're using to attend this meeting today. And then you can type in the code that's there and enter in your answer to this question of why do you love Mount Tam? And as people's answers come in, you know, we hope to see some connections. And this will help ground us around the landscape that we're talking about here today and really allow us to see where there's some common grounds potentially. So with that, hopefully you can all type that www.mentee.com and then use code 14825153. We'll see if we get some input on why you love Mount Tam. I think one of my answers would definitely be the water resources, the forests, the trails. Here we go. We're starting to get answers. Trail networks, a place to breathe, a place to ride my bike. I love mountain biking, biodiversity. The views are epic. I will agree with that one. Vast open space. Yeah. Connected to all sorts of other lands around us as well. Easy access, ease of access. Yeah. Scenic beauty. Nature. The water. That was mine. I agree. Got married there. That's impressive. Non-humans. All right. Some of the wildlife potentially. Had the bear roaming around. You know, he loves it. Nature near the city. I think that's super critical to this whole process. There's a lot of people around this open space. Connection to nature that brings us together. The hiking trails, the pancake breakfast, the West Point Inn. It's a great one. Incredible views, lots of views. It's a paradise indeed. This is great. Wildlife and plants. Sense of awe and such variety. I agree. The flora. Lots of views. I think we all appreciate that. Lots of bike riding. I think the biodiversity is critical as we see. All right. That's great. So I think we'll move on beyond this and we're going to capture all of that content and it'll help as we move forward for this. So a couple of basic ground rules for today, you know, we really ask that you respect other participants' opinions. You focus on the issues. If you provide comments and you be patient with this process, it's going to be a long process. You understand that we have some limitations in this virtual format. And then please, you know, continue to respect the various opinions that the community members bring forward, even if they're different than your own. So finally, if you have questions to the panelists as you move through, use the Q and A box and we'll pose those questions to the panelists at the end. Like I said, not all those questions will be answered today, but we'll use them to inform the June 25th meeting, which will be held on Friday afternoon from 2 to 4. So now we'll move into our first presentation from Dewey Livingston. So we'll bring Dewey onto the screen. Dewey Livingston has been hiking and studying the history of Mount Tamalpais watershed for over 50 years. He is a map archivist and reference librarian at the Ann T. Kent California Room at Marin County's Free Library. He's a historian and co-creator of the Jack Mason Museum of Western Marin History, a longtime researcher and writer of Marin history and former president of the Mount Tamalpais History Project. Dewey has also written extensive history studies for the National Park Service around California. We invited Dewey to present to help us understand the natural heritage of Mount Tamalpais and consider how visitation has changed over time so that we consider how the outcomes of this planning process will shape future conditions on the watershed. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dewey. Thank you for being with us.
Okay, thanks for having me and having a long time of being on Mount Tam and in the watershed. That's, it's very important to me. So I'm very happy to do this. Now I think my share screen didn't go. So there we go. And I'm doing this as part of the staff of the Marin County Free Libraries and T. Kent California Room. Many of you may know that we have an extensive archive of photographs and papers and we have a relatively new map collection that is fantastic. Almost 40,000 historic survey maps of Marin County, including quite a few of the Mount Tamalpais area. So I'm doing this as a as part of the library, as a service to the, to the people. And you should know that we, while we're not open to people coming in, we are answering research, research questions online and by phone. So that's at the Ann T. Kent California Room. So so welcome to this little brief show on the history of the Mount Tamalpais watershed. Now for centuries, all kinds of people have been attracted to Mount Tamalpais. Artists often depicted the mountain as a glorious promontory. This is a fad welch, for instance, who's a pretty prominent artist in his view from down Mill Valley Way. And here's a George de Mont Otis, a Kent field artist who was quite well-known in the view from, from the north side. And photographers have always been drawn by Marin's beauty, always loving Tam's distinctive profile. And it just provides a picture, picture-perfect backdrop for houses and schools and even drivers on the freeway. It's watershed's always been a popular area for visitors, whether they hiked like this or took a train to the top, rode a horse, jogged, took the horse drawn stage, drove their car, circumnavigated, rode a bike. Its beauties never cease and it's has long been a place to find peace and quiet, perhaps some adventure or at least a healthy increased heart rate. Now, the Marin Municipal Water District that we're calling Marin Water these days owns about 22,000 acres of land for the purpose of providing high-quality water, mostly from the slopes of Mount Tamalpais to the residents of Marin. And what's outlined here is only the major southern portion. They also own around Nakashio Reservoir and up at Sula Huli in Northern Marin. It also provides a place for recreation, but that wasn't the original intent. These uses came along with the land sort of grandfathered in. The extensive system of lakes, trails, fire roads and special places is managed by Marin Water staff and many challenges have been faced over the past century and perhaps none as acute as today with the increased visitorship and interest in open spaces. A recurring theme in the history that you'll see here is population growth and the need for water resources as well as public open spaces. The Marin and Mount Tamalpais area was for thousands of years home to the Coast Mewoc people. Their lives depended on the natural resources of the land, including grasslands, forests, birds and mammals and marine life. The Coast Mewoc named Mount Tamalpais, Tamal meaning coast or bay or west, Pius meaning mountain. A Mewoc elder is known to have pronounced the word as Tamal Piyi. There are other Mewoc names on the nearby land. Kukuiku was the name favored by the tribal unit at Nakashio and is the name of a much beloved trail on the east side of the mountain. The legend that the Mewoc avoided the upper areas of the mountain is unconfirmed, but the legend of the Sleeping Lady has long been confirmed to be fiction. The Coast Mewoc people were removed from their traditional lands with the Spanish and later Mexican and American incursions, but they're still here in Marin County and are again finding a strong voice. The Mexican government divided the lands of the Santa Fel Mission into ranchos. And today's watershed lands are parts of the Rancho Punto de Cantin, Tamalasi Bolinas' Phelps Patent, which is a large piece of land east of Bolinas area and Rancho Sausalito. Cattle were introduced to the grasslands during the Mexican period. Into the American era, starting in the late 1840s, redwood forests attracted loggers and also settlers. The myth that Marin was covered in redwoods and they were all cut down is just that, a myth. Redwoods tend to range in the places we see them today with very little land and stump clearing documented in the historical record. In fact, Marin featured extensive grasslands that drew dairymen who settled at every place there was pasture and water. Dairy ranches like the Lagunitas Dairy seen here run for a time by the Bon Tempe brothers. And that's the location of Bon Tempe Lake now. And the Loomis Curtis and later Vincent Liberty Dairy, which is under Alpine Lake. These dairies grazed cows on the northern part of Mount Tamalpais. The area above Carson Falls was the site of a dairy house from which cream was sledded down to the ranch on what we now hike as the Old Sled Road. So as roads encroached upon the slopes of the mountain, people began to discover the wonders of the place. The major new route was the Bolinas Road built in 1878, which passed through Lagunitas Canyon and over Bolinas Ridge. Stagecoaches and others could drop off passengers to attractions along the way, including the Summit House on Bolinas Ridge and the Liberty Roadhouse at that former dairy ranch. And on the south side of the mountain, visitors enjoyed sweeping views of undeveloped Marin and the Bay Area. This view looking down towards Mill Valley and Richardson's Bay. And so many of these old photos are a great reminder of, of how much the landscape has changed with, mostly with development, but in some cases you'll see in the water district with changes with by letting the land rest, so to speak, and not be developed. So stepping back a few years, the growing city of San Rafael needed a reliable water supply. The Marin Water Company constructed Lake Lagunitas in 1872, 73. And this opened up a new area to local people and provided a pretty lake for fishing and boating. This was followed in 1905 with Phoenix Lake down near Ross as the population and its water needs grew in Marin. Although the land was private, people built cabins in many spots on Mount Tam, whether with permission or not. And camps sprung up and scenic glades and families, hermits, groups of musicians or fellow immigrants from Germany and other countries, they all made regular summer encampments. Travelers were aided by the opening in 1884 of Eldridge Grade, which led from the Ross Valley to the West Peak. Life on the mountain saw a radical change in 1896 with the opening of the Mill Valley and Mount Tamalpais Scenic Railway. Known as the crookedest railroad in the world, this train snaked up the south side of the mountain to its destination at the East Peak where an inn welcomed guests. The construction caused short-term damage to the hillsides and interrupted drainage patterns, but the railroad offered an exciting outing and endured as an international attraction until it was closed in 1930. And the railroad company built the West Point Inn in 1904, which hosted overnight people and still does. It's owned by Marin Water now. It's listed on the National Register of Historic Places and it's the last bit of the mountain railroad that was built originally that still stands and it's quite a gem. Be sure to get there for a pancake breakfast this summer if they're doing them. The railroad brought attention to the mountain spurred by leaflets, postcards and brochures sent around the world. Two years after the scenic railway opened, the first comprehensive map of trails and roads on the mountain was published. This is in 1898 and compared to today, there were fewer trails in those days. And so the popularity of hiking brought the construction of dozens of new trails during the 20th century. Hikers typically in groups tramped all over the mountain's flanks, enjoying the pastures, the forested canyons and the breathtaking views. Botanists took an interest in Mount Tam, finding rare stands of Sergeant Shypres, Manzanita, lupins and certain grasses, a long list. It was just a very popular place and of course, why we're here is because it still is. But that popularity goes back a long, long time. Another landmark in the mountain's history is the creation of the Mountain Play in 1913. In a natural amphitheater enlarged by the play's creators and then the CCC in the 1930s, the Mountain Play drew hundreds of people on performance days and still does. Here's a group who had taken the train up to the West Point Inn and then are hiking up to the Mountain Theater. So again, I will step back a few years and look at the issues surrounding the preservation of the mountain. Here we had hundreds, if not thousands of people descending on the mountain and yet it was still largely private property with real threats of development. Much of the ownership was in small water companies looking to cash in on the mountain's attractions. William Kent, a major landowner in the vicinity and inspired by new calls for protecting the mountain, felt strongly that his and his neighbor's property on the mountain should not be developed but preserved for the enjoyment of the public. He bought up land and gathered his friends and many influential citizens to introduce an idea to create a Tamalpais National Park. The National Park idea in 1903 initiated a dream even that a park here would be on par with Yellowstone. This is before the National Park Service was created even. And it's well-known that Kent was responsible for the creation of Muir Woods National Monument. And later, when he served in the US Congress, he was one of the cosponsors of the legislation that created the National Park Service in 1917. Kent also had a big part in the establishment of Mount Tamalpais State Park in 1928. Kent also had a major hand in the creation of the Tamalpais Conservation Club in 1912, which advocated, advocated for conservation of the mountain and increasing the size of protected areas. You see, people were running all over the mountain and in those days rather roughshod, lighting fires and cutting trees and killing animals that the, out of season. And it was, in many accounts, it was, it was quite a mess. In the early years, the TCC's headquarters was the West Point Inn. And members contributed to trail building and maintenance, construction of fire rings and other safety measures and making signs to guide hikers. And members could become a guardian. There's the, one of the badges down there, a numbered badge. You could be a mountain guardian and would help in, in taking care of the mountain directly. So while the National Park idea faded as land costs rose, a new entity arrived and by its creation, much of the watershed was indeed preserved. With the population of Marin booming after the 1906 earthquake and the development of efficient electric train service in Marin, more water was needed. The Marin Municipal Water District was formed after a public vote in 1912, consolidating the assets of the current smaller water companies consisting of more than 10,000 acres of watershed. It was the first municipal water district in California. And over the years, the acreages increased across the mountain and, and to the north. The first big project for MMWD was the construction of Alpine Dam put into service in 1919. The reservoir covered a two-mile stretch of Lagunitas Creek and with it a number of private cabins, including one owned by the Kent family. The finished concrete dam was impressive, as was its accompanying infrastructure as the water was piped to treatment plants and then on to customers. In this early period, MMWD inherited the traditional land uses of its past 50 years, namely the hikers, horseback riders, fishing enthusiasts and the like. The district was not a recreational land manager, but it published maps of the trails and still allowed camping, grazing and hunting in certain areas. They created a patrol system of like deputies in a sense who would patrol the property. There wasn't much emphasis on resource protection or ecology and things in those days, but definitely they wanted to protect the purity of the water. The opening of the private toll road Ridgecrest Boulevard in the 1920s brought automobiles and even more people to mix with the train loads of people arriving on the mountain. But the major use of the watershed besides the collection of water was hiking and horseback riding. The number of trails increased and many new trail maps were published and distributed around California. One of the big challenges faced by land managers was fire prevention. Fires burned regularly on the slopes of the mountain and new agencies formed to prevent and fight fires, which eventually became the Marin County Fire Department. The largest fire occurred in 1945, burning thousands of acres from Lagunitas to Stinson Beach to the whole north side of the mountain. The water district followed up by cutting wide fire breaks on the major ridges of the mountain to protect the growing suburbia that was encroaching up the east, north and south sides of the mountain. And of course, fire suppression has become a big issue these days as we see vegetation on the mountain reaching dangerous levels in contrast to the past. And we might be reminded that the Coast Mewoc used fire for thousands of years to enhance their habitat and help them live the good, healthy lives that they were able to live. So following World War II with the suburbs of Marin growing even more rapidly than ever, a new generation of mountain users emerged. I myself was able to walk out our door and onto the mountain. And we bought topo maps and followed the now legendary Harry Freese map of Mount Tam with its secret places erased in later additions. We explored every trail and every nook and cranny and the patrolmen on the mountain had their work cut out. Before Rangers, there were patrolmen like Joe Zapella, who worked for the district for over 25 years and he knew the place like the back of his hand. And many of us remember Moose, who seemed to own Mount Tam to some of us and darned if a teenager ever got on his bad side. But I think his bark was worse than his bite. We invite Moose stories. I would love to hear more of those. Still, the county's population grew. And the water district built Bon Tempe Dam in 1949 and Kent Lake in 1954. Here it is being cleared and readied as a, one of the major reservoirs. Here it is being cleared uh, and readied as a uh, one of the major reservoirs and the Casio Reservoir in nineteen sixty-one. I want to just take a little moment here to look at some of the changes in the landscape over the years using aerial photos. Um, uh, and you'll see from it turning from a kind of a well-used landscape of uh, ranches and logging uh, into a protected area, uh, but also one that has to uh, uh, preserve water for the population of the county. So here's the area of Bon Tempe Lake in nineteen forty-six. And to get yourself oriented, at the very bottom in the center, you can see the dam at Lake Lagunitas and a little over to the uh, to the right is Pilot Knob. And uh, this is the road down up in the upper left down to Bon Tempe Dam, which in this photo isn't there yet. So let's jump in the same view to nineteen fifty-two. And you'll see that the dam and the water has been put in and the roads have been improved for access going back to forty-six. But the landscape, uh, the vegetation itself hasn't changed much. But if you jump into the current day, you'll see that um, that by ending uh, grazing and woodcutting and even fires, um, that the vegetation has increased quite a bit. If you compare this, you'll find a lot of the little meadows and open areas are filling in with trees. And uh, that is both a good thing and also a worrisome thing, but especially when you get closer to the suburbs and the housing tracks where this uh, overgrowth can be quite worrisome, but um, we can really say that these preserved areas, thanks to the Marin Water, the Water District has a has really enhanced the quality of life in Marin. So when I remember fifty years ago hiking all day on the mountain and barely seeing a soul, things changed over the decades. President Kennedy had inspired the populace to get into exercise and families took to Mount Tam and people started jogging on the trails. The invention of mountain bikes in the nineteen seventies brought a new user group to the fire roads and trails. And the old patrolman class at the Water District became uh, park rangers as certain user conflicts erupted. Popular interest in improved health and the creation of informal clubs brought newly minted hikers, dog walkers, runners and nature lovers to the mountain. And today, the watershed faces a number of challenges as more and more people use it and invent new ways of traveling on it. Instagram is revealing all the secret spots and the days of hiking all day are by oneself are, I guess, gone. I'm here to talk about the past though, but it's up to all of us to step up to the plate and help work out ways to preserve this unique and special place. While the Mount Tamalpais National Park never happened, we truly have a national treasure here today. So um, I just want to close by being sure to thank the many people that have helped over the years, especially uh, wanted to call out Brad Rippey, whose beautiful photographs, we saw quite a few of. He's a lifelong hiker and lover of the mountain. Um, and um, also Fred Sandrock and Lincoln Fairley, who were my mentors and we all miss them very much, the legendary old historians of the mountain. And if you want to learn some more, there are a number of good books um, that are listed here and there are even more than this and websites. So you can learn a lot more about Tamalpais history and the uh, changes there and the environment uh, by um, just heading to the library. So uh, thanks and uh, I will stop my share. Thanks for uh, listening.
All right. Thank you, Dewey. That was a great presentation. I really appreciated all the photos that you brought from the library and um, shared with us. It's amazing to see those places that we've all visited at different times. Um, that was, that was incredible. And so there was a question that came up around if we'll make these presentations available and the answer is yes, we'll make all these presentations available um, on the district's website after the meeting. So thank you, Dewey, and we'll move on to our next presenter for today. The next presenter that we have for you is Dr. Ashley D. Antonio. Um, Dr. Antonio is an assistant professor of nature-based recreation management in the College of Forestry at Oregon State University. Dr. Antonio is a recreation ecologist, whose research focuses on understanding the relationship between visitor behavior and ecological impacts in parks and protected areas. She has worked in numerous protected areas, including Yellowstone, Grand Teton, Rocky Mountains and Yosemite National Parks, as well as national forests in Oregon and California and urban proximate nature areas in Utah, Utah and California. We invited Dr. Antonio um, to present here today to provide an overview of how recreation planning can help land managers protect natural resources while facilitating access to public lands. We also wanted to establish some common language um, among our stakeholders regarding how we'll be moving through this process that we can work from. So with that, I'll hand it over to Ashley. Thank you.
Thanks so much for that great introduction, Sean. I'm gonna get my screen shared. Okay, hopefully folks can see that all right. All right. So um, as Sean mentioned, I'm here to talk about recreation planning. We're gonna have a bit of a shift from a presentation that was very photo-heavy joke conversation. That's very text-heavy. So again, we do have that shared language. So bear with me today. I don't have as many beautiful photos as Dewey does, but hopefully I have some really great background information for you all. So what we're gonna talk about, there's a little bit of a path that we're gonna take today as we learn about outdoor recreation planning. We're talking about what is recreation planning generally? Then we'll talk a little bit about what is a recreation plan. From there, I'll have a little bit of a discussion around how we balance natural resource protection with recreation use. And then I'll briefly touch on some example components from a recreation plan from a state park here in Oregon that really had to think about how to balance natural resource protection and recreation use. And then I'll finally wrap up um, in a summary, talking about the limitation opportunities that we have around recreation planning. So I'm gonna start with a definition and this may seem like common knowledge of what outdoor recreation management is. It seems kind of obvious. But in this official definition, I'm gonna give you this, some really important keywords that I think are relevant when we talk about planning for outdoor recreation. And just as a note, I am gonna use the term outdoor recreation and visitor use interchangeably. I mean the same thing. They're just two terms for the same idea that we use in our field. So outdoor recreation, managing outdoor recreation is a proactive and adaptive process. These are terms that we're gonna use in relation to recreation planning as well. At a point of outdoor recreation management is to identify strategies and tools related to visitor use and related to natural resources and related to management that allow us to achieve our desired conditions for both the natural resources and the visitor experience. So some of those same words that I just used in the definition of outdoor recreation management apply to planning for outdoor recreation also. So outdoor recreation planning is a proactive and forward-thinking process. So it's a process that we go through to try and figure out how, where we want to be in the future with our outdoor recreation. It's also a process that involves stakeholder involvement at all different stages. It's also incredibly interdisciplinary. So we're not just thinking about the visitor use components. We're also thinking about natural resources. We're thinking about water quality. We're thinking about local communities. And so it's a very interdisciplinary activity. And finally, it's iterative, meaning that it's cyclic. So a planning process involves even after you've made a decision about what you want to do and where you want to go. It also involves constant monitoring and an evaluation to see if you are reaching those desired conditions that were outlined. Some other key components, and I'll kind of come back to these a couple of times. Um, so you'll see some similar concepts and threads throughout the presentation. But outdoor recreation planning is really driven by desired conditions and agreed upon management outcomes. And I know I keep using that term desired conditions. I am, I am gonna define it on the next slide, so don't worry if you're not sure what I mean there. It's also bounded by laws, missions and policies of the land manager, the agency. So you know, as an example, I do a lot of work in designated wilderness and national parks. When we're thinking about planning in wilderness, we have to comply with the Wilderness Act and the goals and outcomes and legislation that relates to wilderness management. So certain management strategies and activities might not be permitted in, in those wilderness areas. And so those would automatically be things we can't consider in our planning process. So early on, we want to understand what is the mission and goals of the agency that's managing the park or protected area? What law, laws do we need to be thinking about and what other policies do we need to consider? And I also want to note, and I put this whole thing in bold because it's a really important point. There's no universal planning process or framework for outdoor recreation. I'm gonna give you an example today, but there's not kind of this single framework that everyone uses when they're thinking about planning for outdoor recreation. It can really be tailored to the needs of the entity that's, that's managing the stakeholder involvement that needs to happen. So it is somewhat flexible, but we will talk about some commonalities a lot across most outdoor recreation planning processes. So I keep using this term desired conditions without defining it. So I want to make sure we're all on the same page there. So a desired condition, and this comes from the, this definition comes from the inter-agency visitor use management council. You'll see me use a few resources from them today. Um, that's a federal uh, council of different land managers in the federal government that really focus on managing visitor use. And they've come up with some really contemporary um, approaches for outdoor recreation planning. But a desired condition is a statement of aspiration. It describes the resource conditions, the visitor experiences and the opportunities that we're hoping to achieve in our recreation setting. And so what's really important is the desired condition is not the how. It's not how are we gonna get there? It's the what are we trying to achieve? So it's really focused on these kind of broad statements of what we hope to do, where we hope to be in the future. It's not the how. And so that can often be confusing for, for folks. Sometimes you always want to jump right to our strategies and tools, but we really need to think about what are we trying to achieve? So to kind of summarize what I just presented in a little bit of a visual, outdoor recreation planning and visitor use planning is evaluating your current conditions using a recreation plan and a planning process to help you work towards those desired conditions that we all agree upon. But again, we're always gonna be bounded by missions, values and the laws and policies for the particular natural area or protected area that we're planning for. So hopefully that gives us a pretty good background to the basics of recreation planning. Um, I want to talk a little bit about why a, an entity or an agency or a land manager might initiate a recreation planning process. What might spark this process to start? And generally, there's kind of two broad situations that happen. We might have a management opportunity. Or we might have some sort of issue. And I know issues usually has a negative connotation, but I like to talk about issues and recreation manages an opportunity to kind of move towards some better conditions, some future conditions. Management opportunities can be things like of a funding opportunity or changes in policies. The planning, uh, the management plan example I'm gonna walk us through was initiated because of a management opportunity. The issues that can sometimes occur that can lead to uh, the start of a recreation planning process can be things like changes in use levels. Um, either up or down. Can be changes in visitor behaviors. It can also be changes in visitor preferences or new activity types or different activity types. Um, as an example, at a project in Grand Teton National Park, we were starting to collect data to help the park decide if they wanted to embark on a planning process. And what sparked it was that stand-up paddleboard. It became really popular at a lake. Hadn't been there before. So we collected data on that to help inform that planning process. It's really important that early in a recreation planning process to clearly identify what the opportunities and issues might be. And not only just identify what they are, but try to think through what is causing the issue. And this is incredibly important for putting bounds on your recreation planning process. You need to understand what issues can and cannot be addressed by a single recreation plan or process. So one recreation plan, one recreation process might not be able to address every single issue. Some issues are broader than the individual bounds of an, of a park or protected area. Uh, so we want to, at early on to say, okay, what are our issues? What's causing them? And what do we think this recreation planning process can feasibly address? So I've been kind of talking broadly about recreation planning, but I went to kind of ground us a little bit in an example planning process. So I'm gonna talk briefly about the visitor use management framework that was created by the inter-agency visitor use management council. And by framework, I know it's kind of a jargony academic term. It's just a process. It's the steps that we go through worth doing a recreation planning activity. And so I really like this one. Again, if there's no universal planning framework, but I like this one because I think the visual is really helpful. Um, and uh, the kind of these bolded words and some of these terms, I think really help drive home some of the key steps in most planning processes. So I'm gonna walk us through these items here in the middle of these universals. And then I'll briefly just talk about kind of the broad steps that are outlined in this planning process. So something that is central to almost all planning frameworks is that public involvement piece, right? And our current contemporary thinking is that public involvement should occur at all stages of the planning process. Now, what that looks like might vary based on the stage of the planning process, but it shouldn't just be something that comes at the end, right? So again, contemporary frameworks really focus on this idea of public involvement across all steps. These mission laws and policies, I keep coming back to this, right? Really important that those are driving and understood early on in the planning process. Most planning frameworks are outcomes-focused. So we're really thinking about those desired conditions, those desired outcomes, what our goals are. And that is part of what's driving our decisions. And then finally, if you remember the visual in the previous slide was a circle, right? So it's iterative and adaptive. Once we decide what we're gonna do with our recreation plan, what we did, once we decide those strategies for outdoor recreation management, we're gonna monitor, we're gonna see if we're working towards those desired conditions. And if we're not, we're gonna adapt and see maybe what we might need to change up. Sometimes that adoption can be relatively small. Some education outreach. Sometimes, um, you know, it might be a reevaluation of, you know, desired conditions or outcomes. Um, but we just want to remember that we need to monitor and evaluate how things are going with our recreation plans. So the next slide, it's gonna be text-heavy, but I do want to just broadly talk about those different components of the visitor use management framework and kind of broadly what's happening at each step. Again, to ground some of these concepts about what an outdoor recreation planning process can look like. So in the visitor use management framework, the first step is building the foundation. Um, which is essentially where you're asking the why. Why are we initiating this planning process? What is the purpose and need? What issues are we facing? Again, what issues can this plan feasibly address? This is also a stage we can think about data. What data do you have? What information do you have? What might you need to move forward? So you're really kind of setting yourself up to figure out, okay, why are we moving forward this? What are our issues? What can we address? What do we have in information? What other information might we need? From here, this baseline can help you determine the what. What are our desired conditions? What are we moving towards in the future? What are these aspirational statements? What do we want for this park or protected area? And then it's not until you've figured out the why and the what that we actually get to the how. Those strategies, those management tools to help you achieve those desired conditions. And so when you set that strong foundation, understanding the missions, the laws, the policies, understanding the purpose and issues, setting up your desired conditions, all of that is gonna feed into figuring out what management strategies might we use to manage outdoor recreation in a way to achieve our desired conditions. And then lastly, this monitoring piece, going back, monitoring how things are going, seeing how your outdoor recreation uh, plan is moving forward. And again, adjusting if we need to. So that was all about process, right? And at the end of an outdoor recreation planning process, usually there is a recreation plan, right? A document that kind of guides the recreation for a particular location. There is also no universal recreation plan template or format, just like there's no universal framework. The recreation plan itself is really reflective of the planning process. They may include sections like this, you know, information about the purpose and need, inventory, those laws and missions, a lot of the stuff I've already been talking about. But if you went on Google today and downloaded a bunch of recreation plans, it would all look different. They'd have some similar recreation, like some similar headings. The phrasing might be a little different. Um, but again, there's, there's no universal, I, no universal template for a recreation plan. So it's just something important to know. And the way recreation plans are used by an individual management entity can vary as well, can be a guiding document or a foundational document. Um, one thing they're often used to do is outline those shared goals and desired outcomes between everybody involved. It can identify those and justify those strategies that were um, figured out in terms of how we can achieve our desired conditions, right? That kind of step three I talked about with the visitor use management framework. They're really great at outlining how you got to the decisions that you did for the strategies that you're going to employ. And then often they'll also outline how to go about monitoring and evaluation steps to make sure you're achieving your desired conditions. So these are often the purposes of the recreation plan. Once you've gone through the process, you've all agreed upon the plan. This is how So these are often the purposes of the recreation plan. Once you've gone through the process, you've all agreed upon the plan. This is how that document can be used. So I'm going to start to, to wrap up by talking about this balancing between natural resource protection and recreation and, and walking us through some components of an example recreation plan that, that had to deal or work with this balance. So some of the challenges with recreation and natural resource protection. So I'm a recreation ecologist. My entire field is around understanding the relationships between recreation and the impacts that recreation can cause to natural resources and how to manage and mitigate those. It's a growing field and there's a lot of things we don't know. So sometimes folks will come to me and say, well, what is the impact between this outdoor recreational activity and this wildlife species? And often the answer is, well, I don't know, it depends, depends on the individual, depends on other, um, components of the ecosystem. And so the relationships are not always direct and clear. And so that can pose a challenge for figuring out what that balance is. Often, or some not often, but sometimes management actions that are best for natural resource protection may not align with visitor expectations. So I work, um, on some projects in the Oregon coast where we have a protected species, the western snowy plover. And so we have to make really tough decisions about outdoor recreation use to ensure that this species is protected and we're protecting its habitat and the individuals as well. So sometimes these things can seem in conflict, which is why outdoor recreation planning, we have these strong natural resource protection related missions can be especially challenging. And again, understanding what the mission and the agency objectives are related to natural resources and related to recreation can really help make this process go more smoothly and have it be really clear in terms of what our objectives are. So I'm going to quickly, with the last few minutes I have, walk us through, um, just briefly what a recreation management plan looked like, components of it for Sitka Sedge State Natural Area here in Oregon. So I mentioned it's really important at first to understand the mission of the organization or entity that is managing these areas. So Sitka Sedge is managed by Oregon State Parks. I have their mission here on the slide for you. Uh, it's a com, it's similar to a lot of missions for public lands and other protected area management agencies. They're trying to balance natural and cultural and historic resource protection with recreation use. Not just for today's generations, but future generations as well. Okay. So we need to keep that in mind as we move through to figure out, okay, how are we going to manage recreation at Sitka Sedge? The project need, so Sitka says state natural area was actually transferred to the management of the state parks not too long ago. And so they had to set up a plan. And so their project need was inspired by this idea of that, okay, state parks is going to be managing these lands now. Um, and they felt like there was not a good balance between resource protection and visitor experience. And so they wanted to create a planning process that really looked at what is the appropriate balance between these two components of our natural area? We want to have recreation access and visitor use. We have some really sensitive natural resources here. And I did want to put this slide up quickly just to show you that again, no standard planning framework. So their recreation plan actually outlined the planning process they went through. So they're really transparent and like, here's what we did. Here's the planning process we use that resulted in this recreation plan. Um, and you can download this master plan from Oregon State Parks website. If you want to look through it in more detail, I know that, that flow diagram is a little hard to see. And then they outlined again, this idea of public involvement at all stages. They have some information here about how they went about their outreach and engagement and some ways that they involve the public. There's an entire section in this plan just on public involvement. And then they outlined that they're taking a values-based approach, which is just another way to say that they're using a, um, desired conditions approach to management. They outline their issues and needs. So this is just a couple of examples to show you this. Um, you know, the push and pull of recreation use and natural resources. They have protected species here, western story plovers. But at the same time, they were trying to increase universal access. And then finally, if you look through their plan, you can see they're clearly agreed upon values. And then the desired conditions, which they outline as goals related to these values. So again, top value, natural resources. But they wanted to note that they're preserving and improving these natural resources for both ecological function and recreation and visitor experience. So again, you can see these bits and pieces of the planning process reflected in the recreation plan itself. And then the key thing to note here is I kind of get to my last couple of slides is just, we didn't get to the management actions in this recreation plan until page eighty-five of a hundred and six. So again, the bulk of this process is really setting up what are our goals? Why do we need this? What are our values? What are our desired conditions? And then much later we get to, okay, what are we going to do? And so, you know, it's not that necessarily important for you to be able to see here where they put their new trails or, you know, which trails they decided to restore. But the idea was setting up that early component of the planning process made it really easy to justify and move forward with the strategies that they set up for recreation management. So I'm going to summarize everything in two slides, focus on opportunities and limitations without the recreation planning. So a mission-driven recreation plan and having that really clear mission and objectives at the beginning really increases the likelihood that your desired conditions will be met. So don't, don't skip over, rush through those phases. Stakeholder involvement should occur at all stages of the planning process. And importantly, these plans can create a roadmap for managers to think proactively and interdisciplinary. Limitations, having a plan does not guarantee your desired conditions will be met. It is an iterative process. Effective recreation planning takes time. Sean mentioned that early on. And sometimes we're dealing with sensitive natural resources. We, the precautionary principle is something to keep in mind as a strategy or tool for outdoor recreation planning. So that's all I've got. If you went like forty seconds over, I apologize. Um, but yeah, I hope you learned something about recreation planning and processes and thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Ashley. That was great. I really appreciated kind of the discussion around proactive and adaptive and helping us understand the language around desired conditions and thinking about what a statement of aspiration described the resource conditions that we want to achieve and the visitor experiences that we're after. So that was, that was fantastic. And I appreciate you taking the time to, um, coach us through how we're approaching this process. So we're going to move on to Kate Bicker. Kate is the senior director of engagement and new initiatives at the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy. Kate's work focuses on finding creative and effective ways to engage the public and interagency teams in the planning, implementation and experience of place in public lands. For thirteen years prior to her current role, Kate led the Parks Conservancy's Trails Forever Initiative. A program that restored and enhanced park trails and natural resources through improved design, visitor engagement and volunteer stewardship. We invited Kate to present here today to bring us down to the landscape scale to help us see how recreation planning has been used by neighboring landowners. As well as the importance of having stakeholders involved in developing new forms of partnership to help us with landscape stewardship. So with that, I'll hand it over to Kate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, uh, let's see. Well, I'm going to, um, just, you know, talk about lessons and partnership that we've had uh, in the GG N R A, uh, kind of through the Trails Forever Initiative, which was, um, something I came to the Parks Conservancy to run in two thousand and three. And I'm going to just go briefly into the background and mission of Trails Forever, talk to you a little bit about our approach. Uh, do a case study, a local case study, uh, Hawk Hill, which many of you are probably familiar with. Um, go into some of our lessons learned and then just, uh, a couple of things we took out of some of our lessons and are really have been applying more and more frequently over the last several years. So Trails Forever was a partnership between the Golden Gate National Parks Conservancy, the National Park Service and the Presidio Trust. Um, the mission is to improve the quality of trails in the Golden Gate National Parks, enhance the experiences of park users, support resource preservation and protection, and engage the community in sustaining the parks. I'm showing you this, this is the logo of Trails Forever and it was, uh, it was developed right before I actually started and I don't know where the bunny came from exactly. But I show it because it's representative of some of the challenges, um, I think with partnership and collaboration. When I, probably within my first few weeks of working at the conservancy, going around and talking to different folks in all of the partner organizations, I learned pretty quickly that people were bringing a lot of their own sort of biases and assumptions and ideas to what they thought this initiative was all about. So people who were kind of from the recreation planning or recreation side of things saw the bunny and they were like, yeah, this is going to be all about the resource protection and planning. People who, uh, were more natural resource specialists saw the bunny and they were like, we don't like this. It's going to be trails multiplying like bunnies all over the place, too many trails. Um, so really we, we're challenged with like, how do we get all of ourselves sort of out of our own kind of idea about something and what it means and figure out sort of, you know, these, this shared, um, desired future condition. One of the ways is we really started and encouraged everyone to think about, this is not just about this particular trail. The four foot wide tread, the twenty foot fire road. It's really about the experience that you have on the trail and the landscape that you are going through. That we really want to think about because that's really what people using, um, and, and managing care about. Managing the lands. So Trails Forever, we really started to think about, it's about public access. Trails circulation, it's about restoration of natural and cultural, uh, resources. It's about stewardship and caring for these places. It's about generating support for the park. It's about engaging the public as volunteers, as donors, as supporters. And ultimately, it's also about happy visitors. Um, so the approach that we took was, you know, we didn't do an official recreation plan in the way that Ashley just described it. But in a way, well, it was a plan, you know, we, we had to figure out, define what we were trying to do, where we were trying to do it. What were the issues, um, and opportunities? So we, our, our, our initial project area, project study area for Trails Forever was the, uh, seventeen miles of the coastal trail through the GG N R A from your beach to Maury Point. Uh, and then some, um, additional, uh, adjoining or connecting regional trails. Um, covered about five thousand acres. It went through habitat for more than twenty threatened and endangered species. It went through this area encompass significant cultural resources and all kinds of different recreational uses. And what we first did is understood, well, okay, what information about this corridor do we already have? And then where are their gaps? And then we went about really trying to fill those gaps. So we did a lot of data collection. We did trail assessments, looking at issues with, uh, trail alignment, erosion, sustainability. Um, social trails, undesignated trails, where were they? Why were they there? How were they being used or not used? Uh, we looked at biological resources, including endangered species, um, supporting habitats. Uh, we really tried to understand the public that was there, like who were they? What were they doing? When were they there? Where were they? Why were they there? Uh, you know, over the course of this, we've engaged more than twenty thousand, um, people in, in the project through Trails Forever. We had basic kinds of data sheets, uh, that we took out in the field. We did visitor intercept surveys. Um, that were more scientific, um, with specific protocols, et cetera. Uh, and then at the end, um, we gathered all that data and then we did a whole series of workshops and hikes with interdisciplinary groups of people and, and multi-agency and, um, outside, you know, experts and representatives from different groups to really, um, go out, take all this information and really together start to look at, okay, well, what are all the issues in different locations? Um, and really understand them from one another's perspective. And then, um, start to look at where were their opportunities to address multiple objectives. So where would there be an opportunity to address? Uh, you know, a chronic maintenance issue on a trail and a natural resource protection issue and maybe a cultural resource issue or a circulation or safety issue. Um, and then we were able to sort of take all of our potential projects through this series of criteria. Look at which ones met the most objectives and start to prioritize them in terms of which ones we really wanted to try to advance first, uh, look for funding for, et cetera. And one of the projects that, uh, rose to the top, it was in our top two was, was Hawk Hill. Um, and many of you have probably been to Hawk Hill in the Marin Highlands. You know, one of the things I think that's interesting about this whole process, um, was really understanding ourselves. And then also in working with our, um, out of agency partners and constituents. You know, landscapes change over time and what people use them for change over time. And things that might have been appropriate fifty or sixty years ago aren't anymore. Uh, which also then starts making you think about, well, that desired future condition and what's going to change between now and then. Here you can see on the bottom, excuse me, the, um, trees at the top of Hawk Hill that, that were not there originally. This is a, an old vision when it was the, um, the military base, the Nike missile, um, site. This is what it looked like in two thousand and seven with all of the trees that had grown up in the trees. Were encroaching on the Mission Blue Butterfly Habitat and they were also impacting the, um, historic military resources up there. You can see some of these battery casements and things like that. So we looked at Hawk Hill Resources and Site Enhancement and we had four primary components or objectives. We wanted to restore the Mission Blue Butterfly Habitat, which was about seven acres. We wanted to make public access improvements, coastal trail realignment and also address accessibility concerns. Excuse me, we wanted to, um, address visitor and volunteer safety and, and amenities. Golden Gate Raptor Observatory, every year does a major count of the raptors that are migrating through. And they do it all with volunteers. There's no bathrooms. Um, there were safety issues. So those things were important. And then again, the cultural resources which were being impacted by the roots from the trees and that kind of thing. So we came up with a plan to address all those things. And this is what Hawk Hill looks like now. Um, you might imagine there was a lot of worry about, is this going to impact the raptors? Their migration, whether they stop there. We worked really closely with Audubon and G G R O to really understand that. But you can see here's some of the changes and I'll just quickly go through a couple of other pictures, but trees are gone. You can really see and experience the historic resources a lot. Um, better, there's the, the Mission Blue Habitat is coming back. We have enhanced trails. Some of these were just really making improvements to existing facilities. And in other cases, we had to do some rerouting and things like that. These are just some, uh, before and after photos. Um, that kind of show, and, and this is the all-important bathroom, always important in any recreation conversation. Um. So for us, challenges and lessons learned. Really the value of a comprehensive approach, you know, really looking at every aspect. And, and you know, when you're talking about recreation too, in terms of comprehensive, I think it's important to really think broadly about what is recreation, you know? Often we think of hiking, walking, biking, uh, horseback riding in parks. But people recreate in parks in all kinds of ways. They enjoy art, they enjoy music, they watch things, birds, they do painting. You know? Thirty years ago, there weren't mountain bikes. Ten years ago, there weren't electric bikes. So, you know, things are always changing. And what, what is recreation, um, changes over time? And also changes depending on who's the community of people or the person that you're talking to. So the value of interdisciplinary teams, the value of making people available to answer questions and engage with the public and also with other organizational partners. We spent a lot of time going to different, um, divisions and departmental meetings to explain what we were doing, to answer questions, to get more feedback. We went and met with community organizations. We did public hikes and walks. Um, capturing the visitor use and experience dimension is important. Um, sometimes that gets forgotten about, but it is really important. It's a recreation plan and that's really about visitors and users. Um, maintaining long-term stewardship, include, which includes monitoring, as Ashley mentioned, and engaging the public over time because it is an iterative process and things due to. and engaging the public over time because it is an iterative process and things do change. And then the importance of partnership and the value of doing things differently. And these last two, I'm going to touch on a little bit more before I wrap up. So partnership and collaboration. I'm not a control freak, I just like to have my way. Any anybody who's been part of a public planning process has kind of experienced this. Well, you know, no, I'm not unreasonable, I just, it has to be like this. And and many of us have been that way ourselves. And it's important, I think, for us all to think about going into a new process. You know, who who are we in the and what makes for a productive partnership and a productive collaboration? And also really, who are partners and stakeholders? So there's obviously the agency, the land managing agency or agencies who are part of the partnership. There are the different disciplines that go into really thoughtfully managing a place. So that's a partnership between across disciplines. There are organizations external to the agency who represent either a particular use or a particular resource. There are other community-based partners who represent different constituencies and different audiences. And then there's just the partners of all the individuals, the just the individual members of a community who are who are partners in that kind of community visioning and planning. What makes a great community partnership? The members share a common vision, mission, goals and values. So spending time on really being clear about what that is at the beginning has a genuine interest in and commitment to the community and the place. Shows mutual trust and respect for partners. And I think always, you know, assuming goodwill is a good place to start. Key elements to a successful partnership are openness, trust, self-awareness, honesty, shared goals and values, regular communication between and among partners. And then, you know, each of us as individuals brings something to a partnership. And what can you bring that's going to help to make it productive? Really increasing your knowledge about all the issues, the ones especially that you're not that familiar with. Thinking about your own underlying assumptions and keeping an open mind. Listen to understand, really understand, you know, like what the partners need and why? What are the rules and regulations and laws that govern that place? Put extra time and energy into building relationships with people who are different from you, who like to do different things from you, who come maybe from a different background. And understand who's not at the table and why, and think about how to bring them in. Along those lines, you know, in two thousand and seven, we really started to try to better understand. And I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because I know that Jose has a lot of really amazing experience with this and he'll talk to it. But understanding like, who's not at the park? Why are they not at the park? What are the barriers to their participation and access in every way? Both from just like coming as a visitor, but also to participating in, you know, planning, feedback and volunteerism, et cetera. So we started that work in two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. We learned a lot about who is at the park. We also learned about who isn't at at our park at that time. So we learned our park visitors were largely white, largely wealthy, very well educated. And we wanted to know more about, well, okay, all these other folks, Black Indigenous people of color who weren't as as you know, as represented in our visitorship as they should have been given the demographics of our of the Bay Area. Why was that the case and what could we do about it? We worked with a firm called Contemporania, who has done a lot of work in this area. They were really looking to get it, give us behavioral insights about how do people spend their free time? And these are people who are self-identified, Black Indigenous people of color, Latino, Hispanic, Asian descent, mixed race. Attitudinal insights, what are their values and attitudes that they bring? We also were looking specifically for this project at Chrissy Field. So these are just some samples and I'm happy to share this research with with Sean and the team. But, you know, what do people do when they go to parks? What do they, how do they spend their time? Do they like spending their time? So there's a whole series of behavioral insights, attitudes like, why do they come, what are the values that they bring? And then from that, just drawing some conclusions. So some of the things that we learned, which were maybe a little bit different from what we had been doing, culturally specific programming is was really something that emerged as something important because it's really a way to create a sense of welcome and a sense of belonging for BIPOC communities. Multilingual communications, a strong sign of of inclusion. And for a lot of people, even if say their primary, you know, language at home is is English, they might live with folks whose primary language is something else, Spanish, for example, like grandparents. So being able to have a commute, a family experience in multi-language is really important. And also that these groups are often more socially inclined and prefer to recreate in groups. So much less likely to come alone to a park than they would be with a friend or a group of a family member. So we took this information and really started to think about this. That was completed in two thousand and fourteen. Okay, how can we use this and what can we do differently? Back to Hawk Hill, one of the things that we started was something called migratory story, which we did in partnership with the National Park Service. And this is, how can we use the really incredible work that is has been happening up at Hawk Hill for decades, looking at migration of raptors? And make a connection to the migratory and immigration stories of many Bay Area communities and individuals. So this is a program for elementary school kids. And it's really looking at the at the intersection of kind of nature and culture. You know, why do people move? What's the importance of immigration or migration? Why do living things move? And how does that contribute to the local community or ecosystem? At Chrissy Field, we started, which is twenty years old now, we started looking a couple of years ago at what do what do we need to change or fix or what didn't work the way we thought it would? Back to the iterative and what might we need to do to change? And instead of having our normal series of like public meetings, we threw a big party at Chrissy Field. It was called Chrissy Field Day and we invited all kinds of people from all across the Bay Area to come to Chrissy Field for the day. We made it easy for people to come with their kids, with their elderly parents. There was music, there was food, and then there were all kinds of opportunities to give feedback on different aspects of Chrissy Field. We had these field guides, they were in three different languages. People got them and then spent the day eating, listening to music, having fun with their family or their friends and giving us a lot of information and feedback. And then I guess the last thing, you know, that we started to understand through some of our research is how can we be more creative about communicating with the public in terms of that desired future condition and what we're trying to do? And we really started to work with artists and the arts community in some of our projects to help us figure that out. This is an example from Lands End where we had to do a pretty major forestry project and remove a lot of trees. We left all of the debris from that on the ground because there was concern that birds that use the understory for foraging and nesting, if we took that all away, that they would be impacted. That was great for, you know, folks from Audubon were happy about that. The neighbors and the visitors didn't like it at all because they thought it looked messy. So we engaged an artist from UC Santa Cruz to come out and, you know, think about how we might do a better job of both meeting the the bird needs and the neighbor needs. And they did a whole series of sculptures out of the understory that were there for a number of years, they deteriorated sort of on their own. But we were able to tell the story of the forest, the birds, the birds were happy, the neighbors were happy. So those are just some things that we've learned and done and that is it. Good luck.
Yeah, thank you, Kate, that was fantastic. I really appreciated seeing some of the themes come between. Your presentation and Ashley's just about how we need to be interdisciplinary in this process, how we need to think broadly about recreation and think about building relationships with people who are different and accessing the lands in a different way. So that was a great segue to our next panelist and presenter today. I'm going to introduce Jose Gonzalez, who is a founder and former executive director of Latino Outdoors. He is, he's an experienced educator as a K through twelve public education teacher, an environmental education advisor, outdoor education instructor and coordinator, and university adjunct faculty as a partner in the Avarna Group and through his own consulting work. His focus is on equity and inclusion frameworks and practices in the environmental, outdoor and conservation field. He's also an illustrator and science communicator, as well as a writer with a recent publication in The Beauty and the Beast of California's Wildflowers and Climate Change, which was created by Rob Badger and Nita Winter. It's an amazing book that you should check out if you haven't seen it yet. So Jose is going to help us broaden our thinking around how we include a diverse range of community groups in the planning process who historically have been left out of some of these, some of our thinking while we're considering recreation planning. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jose.
Thank you so much, Sean, and hopefully all technical aspects will work well. If not, I am sure I will be informed clearly. First of all, it's great to be here with all of you. I will weave a few more elements that have been shared already, especially components from the past and how we envision the future. And I think it was really well stated, this idea of desired condition. So I will be weaving in that with some of that social cultural element. So first to start, I will provide some framings, but so you that you can understand how we weave some of the invitations and challenges when we talk about quote unquote diversity in the outdoors. It comes with specific anchor points beyond just general standard type of diversity to mean difference at large. Some of this is are the philosophical foundations. So what I mean by these, these are the isn't, the ideologies, things like racism, for example, that is not grounded in biology, it's a social construct and yet it has an impact on the direct lives of people. Legal foundations, meaning that we, there were laws and policies that enforce that. And the social culture foundations in terms as we begin to tease out devaluations and what is normalized as, for example, recreation, who is associated with particular types of leisure, particular type of recreation? And how does that inform how then open spaces and parks were designed? It's that question of for whom and by whom? So these are just framings and foundations. I call it kind of a DEI landscape orientation because it's a twenty minutes snapshot. So we're not going to be able to cover everything. But hopefully, it can begin to to give us a little bit of kind of the orientation to approach this. A key thing around this is basically that there is a demographic inevitability. And I say that not to make it sound looming or dangerous. I think it's, I say it to acknowledge the importance of priority in reality. The demographics of the country at large, of California, of our particular regions are shifting. And they're going to look very different by twenty fifty compared to nineteen fifty. And how we prepare for and embrace that in order to continue to add to the conservation successes of the past is part of the critical element. If we resist those, misunderstand those or delay kind of the opportunities to engage with that, there are ways that we can both perpetuate harms, not just on each other, but to the land. And so many different ways that you look at the demographics, they they point in the same trend directions. And then the second component of that is that that has an impact on these ideas of diversity, equity, inclusion, not just as like terms to try to keep up with, not just as things that we're supposed to know or overly politicize in partisan ways. To me, it it comes grounded with the reality that as those demographic shifts and then they connect to this question of power and power specifically in terms of decision-making spaces and abilities. What does that mean? So in the civil rights movement, work of the nineteen sixties, for example, was about being to do our best to say that if we have this desired condition, there's that term, to ensure that we really care about and want to embrace the opportunity, the access of communities at large, then we shouldn't have segregation laws. The fact, the reality was that the physical infrastructure was set up such that you could, you had signs that said, if you are white, you can use this door, you can access the resources and if you're not, you can't. And it might be easy to think of that as so such distance in the past, but that's still a generation away. And that had social cultural impact. And so I was, as we're moving from that through the seventies into the eighties and nineties and we begin to better embrace and recognize and celebrate difference. So for example, cultural difference, how does that begin to shape and inform our spaces? Such that in the nineties until today and the future, we're really looking at the impacts of who now sits on board, so who is elected to office, who heads organizations? And that that's an opportunity, that is embracing the strength that comes with diversity. So as we face the adversity of our environmental conservation challenges, we're better suited for that rather than framing that as an area of of fear and concern. And what this matches well is that so many, so much information and data and surveys, especially within the last ten years, has indicated that at large, so many communities, quote unquote, communities of color tend to overrepresent and overindex in terms of care, concern, willingness for the environment, willingness to act, willingness to vote and support. And so we're trying to match, trying to understand the structural reasons for how we can have high interest and willingness to act with underrepresentation. And so this is that work, to be able to say what have been structural challenges that have suppressed a lot of that representation. And so how can we do that so it matches this aspirational work? So in my perspective, obviously, we attain both the desired conditions in terms of our in terms of our social landscape as well as that of the ecological landscape. And as an example of what that, what do we mean about unpacking kind of these cultural constructs? Here's an example from the twenty seventeen Nature of American Studies, in which they're asking a question to say, what is your interest in these different types of activities? And so what's, you know, how high is your interest for hiking? And in this case, the demographic that comes up at the lowest for a lot is the the Black demographic. And so it's easy then to just kind of see that an answer to this is interest in hiking is lowest amount Black adults. And if we take that and it reinforces a narrative to think, oh, X Y Z community isn't interested, isn't engaged, they don't do it, they don't engage within the landscape that I care about it. We might miss some of the more underlying reasons and engage with inquiry, engage with that inquiry and investigation as to what can be reasons for that? Because if the question is asked, interest in walking outdoors and all of a sudden, all of them go up, then really, for me, a question ends up being, what is the difference between hiking and walking outdoors? What is it about the way that we've created these social constructs about aspects of recreation that we could investigate a little further? And to me, that's part of the exciting work. And what, how this maps onto the landscape of Marin, it comes with the realities that we are facing, that Marin as a county is a highly segregated county. And that doesn't mean that it's an indictment of saying, oh, no, people here believe particular things that are harmful at the moment. As we're looking at both the historical reality of development as well as some of the impacts of those ideologies that I mentioned from the past. And for me, then we say, what do we do this to move to the future? So we acknowledge that we either can, A, let's continue and perpetuate segregation, which I'm presuming nobody here would advocate for that. And then say, B, how then can we ensure that the representation of our county really matches the representation we want to have in these open spaces, as was mentioned before? And I'm not going to read all of this, but there is historical accounts and research to back this up in terms of looking at these, when we talk about systemic and historical oppression, they might seem like these abstract academic terms. It still comes at the reality, based on the reality and experiences that 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 people have faced. And so these questions can be helpful in terms of how we're thinking about the a recreation plan. And in this case, one, saying every public space has distincting functions, management practice, funding. And in this case, one, saying every public space has distincting functions, management practice, funding mechanisms, and user groups. So that's all of us here. So that lets us know the specificity of this area, the specificity of the land management of Marin water means that we get to put this into practice here. While the second component here is despite the particularity, we're still challenging these larger isms and ideologies and construct that can press down on limiting the potential that we can develop here. And that gets, when you see images like these, that's really kind of part of what we're talking about. That we, the goal isn't to get overly caught up on using some of these terms against each other and really thinking about what does this mean in the context of power in terms of my ability to feel that I am represented and seen in this space compared to others that have had a lot of different reasons and lived experiences that don't come with my privileges? And so that if we want this equality of access to all kind of see the game, see over the fence, that isn't the same as equality of all getting the same thing. And so we can attain some of that equality by accounting through with equity. What may different communities need to be supported in that? Again, if that is the desired condition. If you have a desired condition that you say, only I want to be able to see the game and I want nobody else to see the game, that's a much different framing. And justice oriented work really looks at what are some of the systemic barriers that are within our ability to undo. And I share this because at the end of the day, we're really trying to look at how do we enhance and better expand this notion of belonging and the idea of having, supporting the self-determined engagement and expression of the individual within the collective. That's what we're really trying to do fundamentally in the work of relationship with each other. I got a few more slides before we wrap it up. I'll touch on two other elements. I'm dropping in here what was mentioned before around bias. And part of why some of this work, in some of the quote unquote DEI work we talk about unconsciente, unconscious cognitive implicit bias, is to be, understand how we, the combination of social condition and incognitive processes through adaptive evolution can set us up, to set us up to not necessarily match our actions with our beliefs and to not pay attention to the way that how we get information can be harmful. And there's a whole bunch of biases. So this isn't about trying to figure out, oh, these are all the ways that we're biased and that's bad. It's just acknowledging our brains have been desired to acquire a lot of this information. And so it can be important to just pause and check in with each other and say, hey, I realize that I can have cognitive implicit bias because we have too much information and we got, and our brains are designed to filter that. At the same time, we don't know enough, so we try to make meaning of the world and we're primed to act fast. And this is how we've made these mental models, these cognitive models of the world. An important question is to be able to ask, how does this connect to our decision making? And could be problematic, could be concerning, could be harmful. And this is how that connects to the isms. It isn't, having bias isn't bad. We all have it because we're designed to have preferences in particular ways. It's acknowledging that if we're not cautious about how that connects to perpetuating some of these harmful ideologies, that's where it's concerning. And as much as this has been part of our history, what's exciting for me is that it's part of our opportunity in future to continue to challenge this and undo it. Because the reality is, as I was mentioning with with policies and laws, is this is our historical fact. And rather than being able to continue or ignore some of this harm in terms as, for example, for indigenous and native communities, as well, especially for black communities, but really a whole spectrum of non-white communities, we can do this differently. And this is what I want to ensure that the, both the maps and the laws of 20, and the policies, the recreation maps of the 2050s aren't the ones of the 1950s or the 1850s. And I'll close with this element, because this is intended to really, for me as well, think about what does this mean in relationship with each other? Fires, especially in California, have been incredibly traumatic. And what I've taken from fires is an acknowledgement that our past practices have caught up with us compounded by climate change. And by past practices means we treated all fire as bad and we suppressed it for a generation or more. And we're learning the value of prescribed burning. What, especially for a fire-adapted ecosystem, what does it mean to have responsible fire tenders rather than irresponsible fire starters, as well as avoiding all fire so that we don't set up these tinderboxes? So what do we mean to move some of these practices into our social spaces? Do we need some prescribed burning in the way that we deal with tension and conflict so that we can actually avoid, we can have good productive conflict and avoid high conflict? Those kind of intensive wildfires of our own spaces? And what high conflict is, as a writer Amanda Ripley notes, this is when we get into these traps of becoming certain of our own righteousness. We make negative assumptions about those who have a different position, and we come to believe that the only acceptable solution is total victory. So that may be familiar for many of us, as has been mentioned before. And if we get caught up in that, it's basically kind of setting up that destructive, intensive type of wildfire that can be very harmful. So we got to be able to look at these questions of investigating the understory, reducing the binary, paying attention as to who's starting the fire just for the sake of having, of starting a fire? How do we buy time and make space and complicate the narrative? So a lot of our work of DEI weaves into this. And hence why it's important to engage in critical inquiry that can help us ask these questions to say like, hey, I may be privileged in that, in these ways. That doesn't automatically mean it's bad. It's just allows me to pause and think about, for those that don't hold this type of privilege, and I care about them being members of my community and representing and having the same access that I do, how do I pause to ensure that I have additional information? That my privilege, that my bias is wrapped in with my privilege, don't get in the way of that? And so close with this, which has been mentioned before, that this can be helpful as models, network leadership principles, which are research-based practices that have helped nonprofit organizations be much more impactful, can apply here to think about four things. How am I focused on the mission and not my own organization? And by mission, I think about that love that you all mentioned at the beginning. How do I focus on the love for the watershed, for the mountain, beyond just my own individual interests? How do I focus on trust, not control? How do we support spaces of trust so that we care about this together rather than wanting to control the outcome in particular ways? Humility, not brand? How do I acknowledge when I want to make the space to support each other? And we're going to make mistakes and hold ourselves in that space rather than just caring about me burnishing a particular brand? And at the end of the day, that we're supporting constellations, not stars? So that doesn't all fall apart when particular people are present or not present. So close there, because I know I gave you quite a bit, but this is meant to weave in and out and inform a lot of the aspects that I have already shared before. So with that, I will pause and pass it back to you, Sean.
All right. Thank you, Jose. That was fantastic. I really appreciated the insight you were bringing forward around desired conditions for social landscape, as well as the natural landscape. I think that's a really important point for us to consider. And those four network principles were very helpful. So to all of our participants here today, there is a Q and A function at the bottom of your screen. Please do click on that Q and A and submit some questions. And we'll be asking and bringing all of our panelists back to do about 10 minutes or so of Q and A for them. And we'll have some broader discussion. And then, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, in case you joined late, we will be having our second meeting on June 25th from 2:00 to 4:00. And we will have the same panelist back in that room, and we'll be doing more small group breakouts to allow for stakeholder input into this process. And that'll really be the intention of that second meeting, is to incorporate the thinking that all of you have around what these desired conditions are and where we go through this process and the type of plan that we come out of this planning effort with. So with that, I'm going to pose a couple of questions that have come through the Q and A to our panelists and have some discussion around where we're going here. So one great question that came up was, how do we, what's the process for identifying these desired conditions? So maybe Ashley, if you want to start off with this, can you, and then Kate, maybe speak to, you know, what, what does the planning process look like for getting stakeholders who might have different opinions to think about the desired conditions collaboratively?
Yeah, I can start. And again, there's no standard way to do this. It really depends on the relationships between the stakeholders and the agency and, and folks. Often, sometimes it can be a focus situation where we're looking at commonalities between different groups in terms of what they value. So it may start with a values discussion, those values then can lead into desired conditions. And that's, I've seen that work really well with some recreation planning here in Oregon, where the discussion starts talking about what do we all commonly value about these areas? And how can we build desired conditions from these, these shared values? And so that's one way I think you can start is focus group, open conversations, starting with places of commonality and starting with values and moving from there to, okay, well, how do those values translate to desired conditions?
Great. Thank you, Ashley. Kate, do you have anything you want to add to that one?
Yeah, I was just going to say it's the same. I think one of the things that's interesting is a lot of times you end up, people end up realizing like, oh, we actually share a lot of the same values, you know? And then, then it's more a question of, of what, either how do we talk about it? Like, do we say hike or do we say walk? Or do we, or, you know, different ways of achieving that same value? So I think that's really helpful to be, to spend time on early, early on in the process.
Great. Thank you. Jose, I think this next question is going to be for you. But how, how do you think we can incorporate principles of inclusion into a recreation planning process?
That's a great question. I often, so I'll start in two ways. The first one is there's three kind of big questions that I often use for reflection. The first one is what power are you willing to give up? And that might sound a little scary because it's like, what do you mean, like, give up? The give up may trigger some things, but I think those are important reflection components in terms of what am I used to having that I maybe don't often think about, that I just have? And how that's not normal, normalized or normalized for others? And that doesn't make power bad, actually, because we all manifest different abilities of power. Because then you can ask yourself, what do I want to do with that? How does that mean to transition power, to expand power? To ensure that, you know, I can wield it in ways that are helpful? The second question is, in service of what? So when we get, we get to some of these questions, especially as is mentioned around values. And we say, oh, we really want to include more, you know, quote unquote, voices of color. And then ask yourselves, in service of what? Why? Is it because we just want to be able to say that they were here? Is it because we are really curious to see what they say would actually shape what we're, wanted you, and we're willing to do that? So that can bring some of those conversations. And then the last one is what thrives and why? It allows the invitation to be able to say, what keeps happening, what is perpetuating? And is that what we want? Because the answer is no, then we can ask them, what is, what keeps supporting that? And if there's good stuff, so to speak, that we're, I really like the way that this feels. So we really like the way this is coming out. Are we really clear as to what's supporting that? Because that could be something as simple as saying, we just started sharing our information in a different place. It could be more nuanced work, like being able to say, we made this space for pronouns because it was really important in terms of having awareness with that type of adversity. Or it can be a lot more systemic and programmatic to be able to say, we're realizing that the way that we've been engaging with each other has been part of that high, high, high conflict component, rather than highly driven inclusion in terms of thinking about our individual responsibilities along with our rights. And that has made a difference.
Great. Thank you, Jose. There's a comment that said they understand the presentations, but we left out wildlife. And we wanted to know if, how we can speak for wildlife? And I think, Kate, your presentation had some discussion about monarch butterflies and how we were thinking about butterflies and some of the planning. So maybe you want to think about how we bring stakeholders, you know, thinking around wildlife protection measures into our planning process?
Yeah, well, I mean, we did a lot of stuff with wildlife and trails forever. I mean, the Mission Blue was, was one species down at Moray Point. We had San Francisco garter snake, we had red-legged frog, we had fork-tailed damselfly. We did a lot, you know, as I mentioned, at Lands End and actually throughout the Presidio, a whole lot about, about kind of bird habitat, various kinds of bird habitat and butterfly. I think part of it is, I don't know, you know, I think people actually really love animals and wildlife, almost everyone. Once you actually start talking about it, so like, we had a partnership with San Francisco Zoo, who brought actually some San Francisco garter snakes out on site so people could really see what, what they were all about. And it really helped generate a lot of support for some of the changes that we proposed to that site that would help protect, protect them. And yeah, so wildlife, to me, wildlife is sort of encompassed in the big umbrella of natural resources, you know? I guess is what I would say.
Ashley, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I think Jose also was going to add, so I'll be quick. Um, yeah, I mean, I think just like Kate ended, you know, when I talked about natural resources and talked about desired conditions, those can be wildlife or ecologically related, right? Even though we're using a visitor's planning framework, I view parks and protected areas as a social ecological system, right? They're both components we need to consider. And so I think, you know, we, when we're talking about desired conditions and we're talking about missions and we're talking about values, you know, that's not just the social values. It can be those ecological ones as well. I think it's just important to remember that.
And then Jose, what did you have to add?
I'll be quick as well, because I think this provides an example when we talk about inclusion, especially in relation to, for example, native and indigenous communities. It invites part of that different framework of orientation to the land and wildlife. So it helps us continue to move from a kind of reductive mechanistic relationship to the land as if it's ours to extract and control, and begins to invite to say, and how do we care for it? And that we are in community with our non-human kin, not just that they're all things that we get to have control and agency manipulation over.
Great. So I'm going to kind of, Dewey, I've got a question about, you know, what do you think we can learn from the past recreational uses on the mountain? And when we're thinking about desired future conditions, you know, how do we use the history to inform our future planning efforts?
Oh, I always look at history as a way to learn how to do some things and how to not do other thing. I think it is, 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 might be the best way to say it, because you can look back and see, for instance, the use of fire on the mountain and the changes that are brought by suppressing fire. You can see overuse of the mountain or extractive uses of things that were obviously a negative impact on the mountain. So I'm a big believer in, in using history and, and natural resources study and restoration planning and all of that. So I think, I think there's a lot, a lot to get out of just these old photos and old accounts of of how things were done and how things used to look and how things used to work.
Great. Thank you, Dewey. Appreciate that perspective. I think we're going to wrap up the panel discussion now and move into our final segment, which is public comment. I'm going to remind all of our participants that the next meeting is going to be June 25th, and all of our panelists will be participating in that meeting. We're going to be doing small breakout rooms to really solicit public input into this process. And I think that's where we'll have more discussion on some of these more focused just points that were brought up in the Q and A. So issues around garbage and issues around wildlife, or questions around balancing different uses. We'll really start to dive in and work through those and discuss those during those small breakout rooms. And we'll be capturing all that public input during that process. And that'll help inform the next step that we take as an organization in the planning process. And as part of the next steps, we intend to bring on a consultant who will help us develop a plan. And we'll be looking broadly at all of these issues. And then we'll be working to develop a stakeholder outreach plan as part of that process to ensure that we continue to have input as we develop the plan. So with that, we're going to bring Terry on to help us with the public comment period. And if you do have a public comment about today or about what we discussed, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. We're only going to give one minute for public comments to keep this moving along. And I do want to reemphasize that the next meeting on the 25th is really going to be the meeting that's designed around incorporating your thinking into this planning process. So with that, do we have any hands raised for public comment?
Oh, yeah, we got one. Barbara Salzman. And after her will be Linda Novy. So Ms. Barbara?
Let's see.
Um, hi, I expressed this to Sean earlier, but I'm still feeling a need for, even for myself, for some basic information to go to all of the participants that are about, about biology, about the resources, about how the diversity. And I, I don't know, I'm still confused about how the, the, a planning process can be on a firm basis without basic, basic information about the nature of the biology and the natural resources.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Linda Novi. Go ahead, ma'am.
I think this is an extremely valuable process. And I, I believe starting with the values discussion is critical. And I think more time with stakeholders is needed to determine how do we value Mount Tamalpais and its resources, et cetera? And I think Jose made a couple of comments that struck me, recognizing that we have rights. But we also have an individual responsibility. And I would say that responsibility is to nature, each other, future generations. And again, Jose made a comment about treating wildlife from a kinship perspective. Kinship with all life. I think the planning process does need to reach out to different stakeholder groups and more information about your process would be appreciated. And thanks so much for doing this. It's incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Laura Chariton. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to echo both Barbara Salzman's statements and also Linda Novi's statements. And I just, this may not be the time, but there's been a lot of talk about, you know, from the Citizens Advisory Committee that there were several people on the committee and several commenters who said that they had ADA issues. One of the ADA issues that's not being addressed with mountain bikers and e-bikers is that there are a lot of people that are hard of hearing and don't know where to be on a fire road. And I've experienced some events recently that would put a, a hard of hearing person at great risk. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Mr. Woody Elliott, please.
Okay, have I unmuted myself?
Yes, sir.
I, I just put something in the, in the questions that, one of the big issues during this pandemic period is the tremendous use that people have taken advantage of, of the open spaces and for good or, or ill, it can be very impactful. So is there any consideration or how will, so you'd call it the carrying capacity of the, of the land for human recreation be considered? There, there's a limit to all things and, and how much can human recreation be increased without adversely affecting the experience to the participants as well as the natural resources? So I haven't heard anything about that. Maybe it's implied, but it'd be useful to consider carrying capacity.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Mike Vandeman. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead, sir. Unmute yourself. Try it again. There you go.
Okay. I asked a question earlier, but I don't want to emphasize that the wildlife cannot speak for themselves, cannot vote, cannot advocate for themselves. And it's kind of like, when you're a parent, you have children, you have to protect your children. You have to give them priority in order for them to be protected because they can't protect themselves. And the same should go for the wildlife, that they should have top priority, period. They were here first. They were here millions of years before we were. And I think quite often they're left out of the discussion. And in order to include them, everybody really should take a class or read a textbook on conservation biology. And these lands are basically wildlife habitat, first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Nona Davis. Go ahead, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you. It's Dennis. This has been Dennis.
Dennis, I'm sorry.
Please remind yourself that I'm Dennis. In any case, I want to echo these various comments that come in from our, from my, from Laura. Well, no, hers wasn't so much on wildlife, but the constituents, if I was just waiting anything at all from today's panel, it was that I wondered, what is this new recreation ecology discipline? And it really is very much a planning approach. It's not an ecological approach. And missing, as Mike said, from the table are the wildlife inhabitants of the mountains. They've been there for a long time and we want to ensure we'll continue to thrive. So we hope that that, there will be kind of a specific inclusion of discussion of what those ecological values are on the mountain. We need that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I do not see any more hands raised.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We really do appreciate your input, your thoughtfulness and your participation. I will emphasize again that we will have another meeting on June 25th. And this will be designed around guiding small group conversations about the topics that were presented today. And then also to get more granular into some of these details. And we'll base some of the design around some of the questions that came through. I will also just in closure, just emphasize that this is the beginning of a long process. We meant to have today's discussions be at a very high level as far as the presentations go. And we fully expect that as we continue through this planning process, we'll start to get more granular on some of these topics that people care so much about. Now with that, the meeting from today, the presentation will be posted on the website next week. With the presentation, we've recorded this meeting, so it'll be available for viewing next week. So we really, again, thank you for your time on a Friday afternoon and we look forward to continue to work with you. And that's going to be the end of our meeting for today. Thank you.